Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Good Republic.
Good Republic, which is stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, indivisible, ever and ever. Thank you, everyone.
Friendly reminder, this meeting is recorded as usual, submitted to PEG TV. And, members in attendance, I have Mike Beecher, John Malcolm, Bob Jones, and Chuck Whedon. And others in attendance, I have Kristen Powers, Keith Mason, and Harry Van Meter, just joined the crew.
At the library.
Yes.
Nice. Okay. Introduction, now you got everybody all set?
Yep.
Approval of the previous, approval of the previous minutes? I looked them over today, they all seem to be good with me. How about you Chuck?
Say it again?
Do you look the minutes over? Do you like them?
Yeah, they're fine.
Bob?
Yeah.
How about you Bob?
There we go. That's better.
Do you look the minutes over Bob?
Yeah, it's fine Mike.
Okay. How about you John?
I'm fine with them.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as printed.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Chuck second it? All in favor? John?
John, yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
Okay. Unanimous.
Okay, and we've got two new entries to the meeting. We have Frank and we also have Alan Turner.
Hi.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. Okay. Pre-requested?
Uh, no official pre-requested.
Okay. Announcements?
None to report from my world, this is Kristen.
Okay. Reports, zoning administrator, could you read that? I don't have, I didn't copy that one.
Uh, yes, I do. Another individual, a 518 phone number just joined the meeting.
Yes, Tom Collard.
Hi Tom.
Hi.
Um, hold on. Okay, so, um, this is Kristen speaking, and we are reviewing a report from the zoning administrator submitted by Jonas. Last week he issued three zoning permits. He has one pending and will approve one on Wednesday. Uh, or that one will be approved Wednesday. Also, a conditional use permit application was mailed out two weeks ago and it has not yet been returned. Also mailed out an agricultural permit application that has also not been returned. Mailed out a subdivision application last week. He needs to follow up on an alleged zoning violation when he visits the project site. This would be a follow-up to a complaint received several weeks ago. He left other notes in the office, but so that was a overview from what he could recall off the top of his head. And that concluded the report from the zoning administrator's office.
Anybody have any questions?
Uh, I have a comment I'd like to make. This is Harry.
Yes.
I spoke to Jonas, uh, last week and asked him whether he would consider being our, now that he's been working with us, whether he'd consider being our permanent zoning administrator? And he said he worked in Poltony for four years as zoning administrator and he was, he had the interim on his title for four years. He said, uh, he said, "I'm not going anywhere." I said, "I know you're not." So he'd like to keep interim on. The question is, should we stop advertising?
You know, we don't have anybody that's even, we haven't even had a nibble, have we?
No. He said that keeping the interim on his title, uh, is sort of a flag to anybody might be interested in the job to say, "Oh, maybe I could take over it full-time." And then they'll put in an application, but I don't see the sense in continuing to run an ad.
I don't think so either. If he, if he'll keep doing it for now, then that sounds great.
Yeah, he says he'll do it for as long as we need him.
Super.
It's, it's fine with me.
May I make a recommendation, this is Kristen. I think, um, it could be nice if he maintains the interim title. I think we could continue to run the ad on the Polit website for no cost. So I know that Elizabeth Gibson, she has that position as listed available positions within the town. So maybe we could leave it up there, but not pay to run an ad in a paper or anything.
That, that makes sense to me. I mean.
Makes sense to me.
It's out there if somebody came in and really wanted it or something like that, that had the qualifications.
And then it's kind of like, you know, kind of like real estate, take it off the market for a little while. And then if he decides he's ready to move along, we could maybe relist it, um, in a more public format too.
What do the rest of you guys think?
I'm fine with it.
With me, just, uh, leave it on our, um, Elizabeth's, uh, site.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
Planning commission, you want to keep that rolling, Harry?
I have nothing further to report. Our meeting is, uh, next, is next Monday.
Okay. Okay. Road foreman. Let's talk about Alan's project, Keith.
Uh, well, we met, John and Chuck and I, um, with Alan and Minga. And, um, you know, I think everybody's aware of what's going on there. It's up to you guys, I guess, to make the final decision as to what we're going to do to accommodate his problem.
So.
Why don't you, uh, talk some more Keith on what, uh, what is taking place or been offered?
Well, like, what's happening is obviously, you, I think you guys have seen the pictures. It's where the culvert dumps in a spring runoff situation. It, it basically floods the backyard and compromises his water system. So, um, we discussed some other alternatives there, but I think basically, um, we can move the culvert so that it's less impactful. But it was a big discussion while we were there as to how far we would move it. Whether we're going down the road farther, uh, which would, becomes a much more extensive project, obviously, because we have to cut the bank to further the ditch on the upper side of the road. And, um, you know, I just, I think if that's what we're going to do, then we need to, um, make the decision so that we can, you know, get it in and get it done this work season at some point, so.
Does that seem like the best option to you Keith?
Well, it's, it's certainly a good option. I mean, as far as obligation, I don't think we're obligated to do, well, we could do it, could do nothing, but I think there's a, down the road farther, we could move it, but it's still going to put water down across his lawn. The farther we go, the better it is for him, and it just becomes more and more of a project. So, just think it's, uh, you know, it's certainly a reasonable solution.
Okay, so, say to move it down as far as it seems like it would be best, what, what are you thinking? Is that something we could do with our backhoe and how many days or?
Oh yeah, it's, it's something we could do with our backhoe. It's, uh, you know, there's, I don't know. Was there four trees, John? Do you remember?
Yeah, I, I, I recommend that we go about four, possibly five trees, uh, about eight, eight inches, uh, through there and nothing any real big. And I think that would be far enough to get it past where it would drain toward the well. I don't think we can cure all the water problems on that property.
No, 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 it's, 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 obviously it's a wet, wet area anyways. And it's just, I think it's the flash flood type that Alan is concerned with anyway. I think he's aware that it's, I mean, there's a spring tile there and a big pond. It's obviously, uh, you know, saturated soil and, uh, but, I mean, that was there the other day, even though our culvert hasn't run a drop. I mean, that's going to be there. I think what, what Alan is concerned with is the spring runoff, flash flood type situation where he gets a glut of water. And to cross the Towesley Road is really not, uh, is really not an option in my opinion. We're just transferring the problem when we do that. We've got to continue to flow the water where it's currently going and just address the issue of, of not compromising his water system in the process, so.
Yeah, I can just confirm that I'm not worried about the, the wa, the general wet condition. Uh, it is, as you say Keith, it's the, uh, the spring runoff that, that is surface water from the road that feeds directly into my well, so, um, uh, which is a dead well. So, it's, uh, moving it down, as John says, uh, you know, four or five trees down, um, to me would be a, a good compromise. I can then, I'll do whatever's needed, uh, once it gets off the road, uh, to, to, uh, you know, swale or whatever it down, uh, nudge it a little further down, uh, but, uh, certainly dumping it right into the well isn't, isn't what, what's needed. Dumping it a bit past where the well is is what, is what I think is what we're talking about, which would be a great, uh, uh, compromise as far as I'm concerned. Uh, and I'd be willing to, uh, do the rest that was needed to, to pull it a little further into the pines.
A rough idea, Michael, this is Chuck. That, uh, I, uh, paced it out. It's about a hundred feet from where the culvert is now to where the culvert would be replaced and reinstalled.
Okay, excellent. Thank you Chuck for that. Keith, what do you think that would take you to ditch that? Couple of days and then a day or two to move the culvert?
Oh no, the culvert, resetting the culvert's easy. The, the bank work there is going to be a couple of days probably. I think we could do it all in a couple of days.
Okay. That doesn't, that wouldn't be.
Some significant fill to move, but not, and, yeah, I think we can manage it in a couple of days, yeah. Uh, we'll leave the culvert right where it is and then just lay the bank back and get rid of the trees. And then it's not a lot different than what we've been doing for a month now on the switch road here and there, so. It's, uh, and if we got close access to get rid of our dirt and we're, when we're doing it, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's not, not a terrible job, no.
Okay.
Certainly well with it, we can do it with our equipment, so. We may have to get some stone there to stabilize the bank or something, you know, while we're in the process. We'll have to see when we get it laid back there, but not a, not a big job. It's just a, just time, that's all.
Okay. So, it, it sounds like that Alan is, is satisfied with that. And to us, it's not a huge project on our part. What of John and Chuck? Do you, do you think it seems reasonable for us to put that on the agenda for this, this summer?
Sooner the better in my eye.
Okay. John?
It's okay with me.
Okay, so, it seems like we have a, we have a good plan in mind. I don't know, it's, it's road maintenance work. It really doesn't require any kind of, of, try to say motion or anything like that, would you say? So it's just something that I think we should just give you the permission to do Keith and.
Right. I don't, yeah, I don't think it needs to be a motion. We'll just add it to our list and, and, um, we'll work it in when it, when it fits the schedule. So, I mean, it may very well be July or August at this point, but certainly before we get into, next spring, you shouldn't have water running where it is now, so.
Get it, get the culvert some time to pack in before winter anyways.
Right, right.
Okay, good. Well, thanks, uh, thank you for that. And, uh, I'll look forward, Keith, to you're getting in touch with me when you're going to do things. If you need anything, uh, from my end or, uh, in terms of putting the dirt, uh, you might just be able to dump it over the edge. We can figure something out when you start the work, um, but, uh, but, uh, looking forward to whenever it is that you can begin.
Okay.
If you give me a little heads up, I might be able to get somebody in to be able to do the swale work at the, at the same time and.
Oh, okay, okay, yep. Yeah. Yeah, we'll, uh, yeah, when we get closer. It's, it's not on the shortlist right now, Alan. That's all I'm saying, so.
Yeah, great. As, as long as before the fall falls, uh, or as Mike said, to let the culvert, you know, settle in before the ground freezes up, uh, that'll be fine.
Okay, okay.
Great, thank you gentlemen. I appreciate it. I may bow out of the meeting in a little bit, but thanks very much for your time and attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for working with us, Alan, and, and getting through this in a reasonable way. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay Keith, what other kind of cool stuff? Oh.
Sorry, I was just going to say Keith had, um, before the meeting too, Keith had submitted a, a report to me as well, so. Keith, I'm happy to, I'm happy to read that off if you'd like, or Keith, if you wanted to.
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll read it off. Um, Warren Switch, Warren Switch Road project is ongoing and nearing preparation for the slate rubble. One more culvert and some ditching and we will be ready. Bets Bridge Road is next. We are also applying CA, oh, calcium, is that right Keith?
Calcium chloride, yeah.
Calcium chloride for dust control, expecting soon to be able to get hot mix for crossing on Route 153.
Excellent. Okay, so, as far as the Warren Switch Road goes Keith, Eileen Troy has contacted me again and wondering what we can do about the water that's going into the yard there. And I tried to explain to her that, that we've just replaced existing culverts and, and the water that was, is running is just water that's been running anyways.
Right, well, it's, it's brought, right, it's brought upon by pumping in Eric Ely's quarry, which is right next door.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, just, just up, prior to Joe Pliscos and Paul Lobis is where the big road goes in. There is a quarry that sets back in there and they are pumping that down and that is the additional water. So that's why that culvert, when we first installed it, it let the water down after the beavers had plugged it up and so on and so forth. And then no water was coming through our culvert, but as long as they're pumping, there's going to be a flow of water there. I don't think the town has any jurisdiction over that flow of water. You know, that's a neighboring quarry that's pumping water and there may be a dispute there. I don't know. I mean, but our role in all of this is to cross the, get the water across the road in a manner that, you know, you know, doesn't damage the town road. And it's going out and then it drops right through the stone and must be going into the quarry and on down through towards where Peter Pedro is. I mean, that's the natural flow of the water there and, and, you know, we can't really alter that. We're, we're, and, you know, I wouldn't recommend going over there and the town getting involved on trying to tell the quarries where to pump. I mean, that's all deeded rights and as far as I know, they aren't doing anything out of hand. I'm, I spoke with Eileen a couple of weeks ago now, but I've spoke to her brother John several times because he's been up through there while we're working and stops and talks to me. And, and, um, you know, I have explained to him that is really just, uh, you know, as long as that quarry is pumping water, it's going to be going through that culvert. But, I mean, he's not delivering it right to the roadside, but it's still where he pumps it. Ends up coming back into that pool there and then crossing through. And, you know, it's, I don't know, there's two pretty good lines coming up out of there, like six inch or something. You know, it's a pretty steady flow of water, so. So as long as they're pumping, it's going to be coming there. And I don't know, you know, I don't, I don't have a solid answer for her that the town can do anything for her in that situation.
So, one of the things, one of the things that she said is that the culverts didn't go back in the same location that the old ones were. That's what she expressed to me on the phone.
Uh, did she know where the old one was?
She claims to have pictures.
Was a smaller pipe and that road was basically built up with stone and it was constant flow through that stone base as well, which allowed that water to flow through there. And the pipe was small, probably, I don't know, six or eight inches. But just a small pipe that actually Pafundi had put in there, I guess, when he, him and Paul, Paul Lobis said, they put that in there when they did it and, uh.
Didn't they push that road over?
Well.
Or isn't that the spot that they pushed it over?
When, when he, when he changed the road, when he changed the road there, this project was done at the same time, yes. But I don't think they altered the road much at that particular site.
Right, it's farther down.
It just west of that was where the road went around to the left prior and then, you know, they moved it back over, which I guess it was really a quarry road and the town's right away was over where the road is now. And because he was running quarry trucks up through there, he didn't want the regular traffic running with him, you know? So, they put the town road back where it had originally been, I, the way I understand it. But I don't think they moved the road much at the site where the culvert is, so.
So what?
I mean, we can, we can go down the ditch line and try to alter that flow of water some other place than right where it dumps, but I, it's still going to end up going down across that property.
Right, well, what I'm getting is, is she's, she said because it drains into the mill yard, it makes the mill yard not as, as saleable, um, with the water running. So I drove up to there tonight and looked at it and I was curious if, it looks like we might be able to go easterly with the ditch and tie into that other, where that other outfall is at the base of that pile between him and Joey. Does that seem reasonable to you?
That, that may be possible. I would have to shoot that, Mike. I think it's pretty, pretty flat up through there, but, and we don't want to get in the situation where we're allowing water to come from the other one back that way as well. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand that.
I, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want that flow that goes down through behind where the Kishuba's trailer was.
Right.
That, that ditch line does the same thing. It just eventually leaches into the quarry pile there and goes away. And, did you walk out where that water is going that's coming out of the culvert?
No, I never got out of my truck. I just looked and I could see that it goes out maybe thirty, forty feet and then it disappears in the yard there.
Right, it just drops, there's actually a big siphon in there that that water is, it's almost eerie to stand on it because you wonder what you're standing on. It's got to be all rock or it would be all caved in.
Right.
But, uh, it's, uh, you know, I mean, we're not really sending water anywhere that it didn't go. It's just more water, I think is more, the problem is more water and not that it's going in a different area.
Okay. Well, I wanted to talk to you a little bit more about it. I, I need to, I'm trying to work with her. I've been talking, like I said, she called me again and, and I told her that I would, you know, she, she had pictures. She claims that the culverts are not in the same location that it was, but.
Well, the water is actually still flowing through the road, Mike. You could see two other spots there. Did you see the two other spots that, where the water is actually coming through under the road?
Oh, a lot of it's still coming through.
On either side of that culvert, there is another, another spot and that whole road used to drain there. And what the beavers did was just sealed that whole side over with mud.
Okay.
So, so it, because that culvert, that pond would fill up and go down and fill up and go down slowly. You know what I'm saying? Just because of the flow was restricted, but it was never enough to where it came up and overtopped the road until the beavers sealed it all over. And, so, you know, I mean, our culvert will, I can't, it would do the same thing right now without the additional flow of water.
Right.
There's, um, there's one comment. This is Kristen, uh, from, submitted by Frank, just that typically water is a state issue with some needing a discharge permit to discharge water into the waters of the state, unless grandfathered in for some reason. He can, uh, next comment was to ask Vermont State, who are in quarries or mines, to find out who at the state is in charge of mine discharge. Might be quarries and the mines, folks who write the permits.
Right, so, that, that, I, I believe all that and the fact, the fact that it's come onto us is because we just changed that culvert. We didn't really do anything, but we just brought attention to it, I think. Right Keith?
That's kind of what's going on. Um, if I could make a suggestion, from them two other spots, if we brought them back to the culvert and just channelized from the culvert to where that sinkhole is going in, there would be just one channel going across the mill yard and we perhaps could control it. But, I mean, that, in the winter time in particular, when you had a lot of water, you know, the water tables high and that, that was always wet in there. I mean, the Kishubas used to scrape it off and ice skate on it.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I, I know that. I've seen that, you know, so it's, but then this, by this time of year, that would all settle out and, and, you know, it would leach into the ground and there'd be less water flow. But we, without, with, it's the pumping situation that is causing all of the additional water.
Right.
And then, everybody, everybody else out there that pumps goes the other way. And it goes out through and through the culverts on Briar Hill by Bruce Hewlett's house. Everybody, every other quarry goes that way, but Eric Ely's pumps back this way.
Okay.
And that's just information I've got from talking with the, the guys in the quarries out there.
Right. Alright, so, I guess, if you could look at, seeing if, if you could make some kind of ditch, either to make it go easterly a little bit or something? Or if we could do something and then I'll try to explain to her that, that, and, without water being pumped in the quarry, she wouldn't be experiencing this problem. It's because someone's adding water to that quarry across the road. It's why it keeps, it keeps flowing. That's what's keeping the flow.
That, that's exactly right, yes.
Okay, okay. And if you could look, look it over and see if, you know, if there is something that we could do to maybe ease this issue a little bit? I, you know, maybe try and shoot it toward the old trailer or something like that a little bit possibly, or?
Right, I, yeah, I, yeah, we could, we can look at it, but I, I, I don't think it's going to want to go that way, Mike.
Okay.
I don't, I, it may, but without shooting it with a transit, I wouldn't commit to that.
Absolutely.
I would sooner, sooner think we could come from the two other places where the water's crossing and consolidate them to the face of the culvert. And then it, right now, where it's coming through under the road is probably sixty or seventy feet there. That's a constant seat, plus where the culvert is. If we could get them seats to all feed back to one channel at the outlet of the culvert, we probably would be, would be better, so.
That would keep a drier spot and then, then just bring it to, okay. I'll, I'll tell her that we've looked into it and we're, we'll try and come up with an option to, to kind of maintain everything, but it's also a, a function of the fact that that quarry is getting pumped into the one across the road.
Right, and if we, if we move the culvert down towards where the other culvert was, we start getting into that bedrock that's on the west side of where the culvert is. And we don't, we can't get depth enough to get an eighteen inch tube in there if we go that way.
Yeah, that's what it looked like to me. There wasn't much room to go either way with it.
No, if, the other pipe was farther to the west, but if you look, I've, it scraped right back to bedrock, right there, coming around there, down where that was and that small pipe sitting there, it would, but I don't think we can. to get cover on an eighteen inch pipe. Well, that's why we stayed up in there where they had put all the fill in the road simply to, to have depth enough to get our pipe down in there and let it work. And it's put in dead flat nearly with the transit, just sloping up to let it through there so that, you know, ideally, the bottom of our covert should be about grade of that pond. And you know, that covert shouldn't flow all the time, only as needed on a, you know, a heavy rain or a spring runoff situation. Otherwise, that, our covert shouldn't flow. So, but the fact that they're constantly feeding extra water in there is just uh, is what's creating the issue, so.
Okay. All right, that sounds good to me. And then, and then you'll come up with a proposal of, of maybe, uh, of trying to get that all consolidated in there. If, if you made that, that ditch go a little bit westerly, do you think that water would get rid of? Like toward where the old covert exited or?
If it, yeah, if it, my, I, my thoughts are it's going to go to the same spot.
Okay.
It's just the way things are contoured there, but it may go around towards the westerly quarry pile and then come back to it and it may, the area that she's talking about would be uh, you know, would stay drier. I don't know, but it's, you know, I, it's, yeah, it's, you know, I mean, we're kind of getting the blame here for not being able to sell the property, but you know, anybody that's looking at that property is looking at, looking at it for a quarry and um, they're familiar with water pumping and everything else that needs to happen there, you know, it's uh, those are just hard facts. I'm not, I'm not, those are just hard facts. It's not what they want to hear, I understand, but those are the hard facts. It's uh, you know, that, that's just facts that have to be faced and we can't sugarcoat them any. They're just, that's what's gotta happen. That water's got to cross there somewhere and, and it's just flows down there till it finds a way down into the rock. And with the additional water, it's just taking too long to do it, you know, it's constant flow and.
Right, all right. I'll explain that. I'll explain that to her. Um, I'll try and get, reach out to her this week and, and talk to her some more about it. And, and just tell her that, you know, it's, it's really only the fact, the, the function that, that there's a whole bunch of extra water going in that hole across the road. Is, is why that's not just disappearing into the, into the flat rock like it always did, into the yard. Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Keith or anything like that?
Well, this is Chuck. Same old story. The roll-off is still at, behind the highway garage. Uh, at least it was last night. Uh, I assume probably it's still there today, Keith.
As far as I know, I've heard nothing from him.
All right, we talked to Ed and he was going to uh, he was gonna contact.
Hubbard's.
Hubbard, so that's, that's where that was left, so.
Ed had told me that, Ed had told me that Hubbard would be in touch with me and I have heard nothing from him, so I don't know for sure what the plan is there, but I haven't reached out to him, but Ed had said that he thought that he would be in touch and would come down after it, so.
Okay, so maybe if you can find a, a chance to call him so we can get this behind us, that would be, that would be good, Keith.
Okay.
I don't know, do you have the, do you have the, the contact that Ed had talked to up at Hubbard's or not?
Uh, well, I, I'm sure if I just call up there, the,
Somebody will help you right out.
Something, it was, I mean, I, I think he was uh, noticed because he had the dumpsters next to Myron Waite's locker down there when they tore that house down. He was in and out of town and I thought he might want to do it then, but I haven't. Last I knew, Ed said he would be in touch, so.
Okay. All right, so we either need to talk to Ed or, or if you could call Hubbard or one or the other and see if we can keep this ball rolling and get this behind us. Anything else you gentlemen have?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Uh, Bob?
I'm good.
Good, all right. Well, thank you, Keith. That road's, uh, switch road's looking pretty nice. I came over it and it looks like we're, we're in, setting up for a much nicer road for sure.
Oh yeah, it's, the brushwork is all done. We've got some ditching and we pulled the stumps and stuff. We got some banks to nick up and some, yeah, so it, you know, it's coming good. It's just time.
Yeah, that, that S turn is going to be a lot better, that's for sure.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, okay, good. Kristen, is there an assessor's report?
Um, there is not, but that, there is a town clerk's report.
Okay, perfect.
So, um, this is Kristen and reporting on a memo from the town clerk. First item, assessor's office, nothing this week. Second item, the town hall is open by appointment only. I sent you all the opening protocol yesterday. Next point, as part of opening by appointment, we are adhering strictly to the criteria mentioned in our protocol. Our first researcher appointments will be tomorrow. I have had very good feedback and support from researchers and found them to be respectful and patient. The window for my door has been ordered. We have finally, as of today, received the supplies that we needed to be able to start making appointments and have more on the way. This has been a very difficult process procuring these supplies. Sue has started back this week. We are all still keeping modified hours and as per the governor, encouraged to work from home when we can. We will be closed on Monday in honor of Memorial Day. I may not attend the meeting tonight due to other conflicts. Have a wonderful evening. Stay home, stay safe, stay healthy. Respectfully submitted, Deb.
Excellent. Moving right on to the treasury report.
Yep, um, would you like me to read that as well?
If you would, please.
Sure. Um, so this is Kristen, reading the treasurer's memo for May nineteenth, twenty twenty. There are two warrants to be signed. Payroll for the week was eight thousand, eight hundred, twenty-nine dollars and four cents. The total accounts payable was twelve thousand, nine hundred, eighty dollars, fifty-four cents. Monies from the general fund, ten thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy cents. Highway, sixty-six hundred, eight dollars, forty-one cents. Wastewater, five thousand, sixty-eight, forty-seven cents. The quarterly state aid payment was deposited to the highway money market in the amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-six cents. The final wastewater collection is complete. The breakdown is below. The levy is nine thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ten dollars. Collection to date, seventy thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. Cumulative adjustments, one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Delinquent wastewater fees, twenty-five thousand, ninety-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. Please authorize Bob to sign the audit engagement letter. Um, old business, if any departments are ordering supplies that are specific to COVID safety guidelines, I need to know in order to track our COVID specific expenses. Old business, I have all COVID training certificates in hand except for the highway department and the select board members except for John. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack. So, order of business, looks like we, the board needs to authorize Bob to sign an audit engagement letter.
Is that letter right there for you to sign, Bob?
Julie will have it for me there at the town hall.
Okay. So I looked that over quickly the other day. Did any, does anybody else want to look that over or it's just, it's the standard letter that we get from Mudgeet? Um, explaining what he's gonna do and and everything that has to do with our annual audit that he does every year for us.
This is John. Did, did that have a numbered, uh, figure on it or not? I couldn't find one or maybe I missed it.
I guess I didn't look at that.
I was just wondering how it, how it compared with what we had budgeted.
I don't have a copy of that right here with me, so we can try and find that out. We could just shoot Julie a quick message and see.
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay. Are you okay with signing it? Or do we want to wait until, cause I, I think we can probably.
I'm okay signing. I'm just curious.
I'm pretty sure we locked in, uh, we locked in for several years with him, John, at a, at a fixed rate.
I, I think you're right, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Neil, when you, before you sign that letter, you'll make sure it's the same as we've been paying right along, Bob?
Yes, I will.
Excellent, thank you. So, does somebody want to make a motion for Bob to sign that?
I'll make that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
All right, you got that, Kristen?
Hmm.
Chuck and John? Any discussion? All in favor, John? In favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, thank you.
Okay, um,
Mike? Yes. This is Keith, can I check back in for a minute?
Yes, you can.
Uh, just, we've been notified, maybe you guys got the email too, but the grants are all in turmoil this year, so we will not, the only one that really impacts us is going to be the one we applied for down on the Harriet Road.
Right.
So it doesn't affect, we don't have any open grants or anything coming in that we're been working on that we expect to get paid for. Um, and the, the local roads grant, they extended some deadlines on that to June thirtieth, so some more information will be coming on that, but the only grant that it impacts as far as, well, it could impact our paving and covert structures, but we, you know, paving we should be eligible for, but they, they're just all open-ended at this point, so until further notice, we can't count on any of that, so.
Okay, so we just won't, we're planning on holding on to that Harriet Brook job until we can get the money to do it, right?
Well, well, right, I don't, even if, it looks like even if they do award it to us this year, it, it won't happen in a manner that'll allow us to, to start working on it, so.
Okay.
Not unless they, not unless they hurry things through and say, well, okay, you can start first of September or something. That's not a project we're going to start at that point in the work season, so.
Okay, understood, yep.
Well, okay, all right, I just wanted to add that because.
Oh, good, thank you. I'd saw it, but I hadn't, I didn't think to bring it up right now, so.
All right. I'm checking out.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, Keith.
Um, so this is Kristen, the only other, the old business from Julie was that if any departments are ordering supplies specific to COVID safety, just to make sure to let her know. Um, and then regarding the COVID training certificates. Um, so John, you, we have yours, the highway department, oh, Keith just left, but um, I think Keith had said that the highway department had completed the COVID training. They just weren't able to do the certificates and that was my understanding as well, but Bob Morleino has offered to host a Zoom call to go through that training with the remaining folks who hadn't been able to participate in it. Um, so either the remaining four of you guys, with the exception of John, we can, you know, I can help coordinate a, a date and time that works for you all to hop onto a Zoom call with Bob and go through that, or you can just go through it in your email and do the, it's a very quick training, so whatever you would like seeing is, I think it's pretty much. So we can.
I'll, I'll reach out to Bob and try and go through it in an email, cause I already gone through it for work and I have to take my temperature every morning anyway, so.
Right, so I think everybody has been, we just have to get the certificates. Um, once it's been completed, so that way we can have everything on file. So we can, you and I can connect on that too, Mike. I'd be happy to help.
Okay, great, thank you.
And otherwise not.
Can you send Keith a message and ask him to make sure he connects with Bob this week and gets that taken care of?
Yes.
Thank you.
Will you vote on the warrants yet?
No.
We did not.
Well, this is Chuck. I can't vote on the warrants because again, for the second meeting, I did not receive them.
They were sent, this is Kristen, they were sent to your new email address. Julie said she confirmed they all got sent. Um, but they were all sent, she's only sending them to the select board email addresses since they contain information about town finances.
Have you, have you signed on to that, that Google email, Chuck?
Um, I can't remember.
I think you, I think it's on your iPad. Um, so you, I remember we had talked about you had been able to set, your daughter helped you maybe set it up. And then Julie also said she's happy to print out physical copies for anybody that needs it or is interested in it, so um, that's just something that she said before noon on Tuesdays, she would be happy to be able to accommodate for anybody.
And she would also appreciate if, after we review them, that we acknowledge that we reviewed them and that way she knows everybody's had a chance to look them over. On the bottom of the, on the bottom of the email, it, there's, there's a little message that you can say you got it or something like that. It's, it took me a minute to figure it out. I'm not used to the Google mail as like the Microsoft, but is that, is that how you send back the read receipt, Kristen?
My understanding is that once, if she's established a read receipt, once you open the email, it will automatically send her an alert, or there might be a pop-up that says, do you wish to send this read receipt? And you can say yes.
Okay.
So.
So that's where we're at with that. I didn't, I didn't see anything out of line on the warrant. How about you, John?
We're spending a lot on flags. I don't know, we need a lot of flags replaced or?
Um, I can, this is Kristen, I, uh, earlier in the year, it might have been even late twenty nineteen, um, it was determined that the, while the fire department takes, deals with putting up and down the flag, it's the town's responsibility to purchase them and they had let the town know that several, a hand, good handful of them needed to be replaced um, when they took them down in the fall.
Okay, I'm glad when they take down the ragged ones.
Yeah, so they, um, I recall there was a meeting, I think in the fall when I think John Weiss let us know that they had taken them down and a good handful of them had seen their final wave, so they, they had, or I think that he had put in a request that we ordered some new ones for this year.
Okay.
All right, good, thank you. Bob, what do you think about the warrants?
They're fine, Mike.
Okay, do you want to make, uh, John, you want to make a motion or?
I'll make the motion to accept the warrants as printed.
Do you want to second it, Chuck, even though that Bob, cause Bob's gonna sign them? Or would you prefer not to because you have?
Well, I haven't seen them, so I'd rather not.
All right. So I, I guess I can second that motion legally, can't I?
Um, off the top of my head, I don't know because we don't do that often.
Right, that's.
If Bob is comfortable seconding it, I know he did last meeting.
Yeah, all right, we'll just have you do it, Bob.
That's fine, that's fine. I can second it if need be.
Thanks.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes, Chuck?
All right.
Uh, I, um, the uh, email that I have is just my first letter, my last name, dot.
Yes. Yep, it should be PaulitSB@gmail.com after your first initial.
Okay. I just found it, so maybe I'll be able to see it.
Chuck, you, you impressed me. You're so tech savvy, I'm telling you.
Oh yeah, yeah, I, right, right.
The new IT department of the town.
I'm more phone savvy than I am anything else right now. I'll be glad. I'll be glad when the floodgates open up and I can go back to work.
Go back to reming.
Glad you found that.
So, let's, let's vote on this, John Malcolm?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, thank you.
We have, uh, this is Kristen, we have no reports this week from the emergency management director or the health officer's report. Um, so, nothing officially submitted.
Okay, so now we're down to wastewater?
We are down to wastewater.
Okay, so I, I, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I have, um, she had sent a report to the e, to my email, our email, from April 2020 operations update.
Please read that.
Okay, um, this is the VTOMs operations update for the Polit wastewater treatment facility for April 2020. In addition, the submissions for the April DMR submitted today are attached for your use. Please note that the motor appears to be bad on the chart recorder. A replacement motor has been ordered from USA Blue Book today and will be installed by Cyrus once it's received. Until then, the chart recordings are in one line as it will not rotate. Future priorities, continued pumping issues at Spruce Gum Pump Station, pump number one not working, to figure out. Next sludge pumping approximately June 2020. Recommend jetting of collection system to get rid of solids building up to prevent future unwelcome clogs. Recommended vacuum and pressure washing cleanout of basement tankage to remove many years of organic loadings from influence structure through septic tanks, openings, and aeration basins to prevent future heavy loadings and clogs. Possibly do this in June in conjunction with pumping recommended above. Look for updates from Jenny Oster HTA on sludge holding feasibility study. Please let us know if you have any other questions, Jill Marsano.
Okay, so I talked to them about sludge hauling. And actually, when they do the main pimp, pumping, they'll probably still have A1 do the sludge hauling. What their new truck that, that they want to, uh, to work with us with is a, is a jetting vacuum truck. And like the two tanks by the, the main road on that side of the building, because we have to pump them from ground level, it's, it's hard to get the bottom sludge pumped out because it's, I don't know, like twenty-six feet or something like that. So, the, the regular vacuum truck that A1 has doesn't, doesn't pump that out, but it, it can. So, what she'd like to do is, is bring their truck down after A1 hauls off all the, the light stuff. When, when they deem necessary, bring their jetting truck down. It's got a much stronger suction on it so that they can go down and clean all the, the buildup that's in there. And like right now, we got like eight years of, of buildup in that tank. And also, like the pump station in, in West Paul, up in Spruce Gum is, is over twenty feet deep. So, it's hard to, uh, get that with just the A1 truck. So, they want to bring that down when deemed necessary to, uh, to, uh, pump, to pump that out so they can flush it better, jet it in, and get it done. Um, at this point, she didn't give me any, any quotes on, on doing a jet, a jet, um, of the collection system. But she did say that they would, anytime they use their pump truck, they'll match the rate that A1's given us, which is like eighteen or nineteen cents a gallon. She did say that's a very good rate. And because their truck is smaller, because it's got the big pump, it certainly is, is more cost-effective to stay with A1 for the, for the major pumping jobs when it's more water than, than heavier sludge. The other question that came up when we talked last meeting was, if we can get this new sludge holding tank where the store is, if we can build a new sludge holding tank there, how that would affect our overall sludge at our, our plant? And she said that because of the aeration that would occur in the sludge being, being more direct in, it being more sludged than, than water, because right now we're dealing with issues that some of it's sludge and some of it's water that we can't decant off the top. That with a sludge facility, a holding tank there and being aerated, it would actually reduce the amount of sludge during the course of the year because it would break down more. So, it would be a benefit to us in that direction. And as far as, she hasn't heard any more details from Jenny, but she hoped to have some sooner than later. She said that she would expect that it wouldn't be a lot longer before they can really lay out the scope of a, of the project and see the costs and the feasibility and stuff like that. And one of the things that she said she's been watching very carefully is, is the funding available? Um, because of, because of the sludge and stuff like that, it qualifies for a lot of these, these new emergency funds that are out right now. And, and it also calculates the, the income of the people that are on the system. So, it, it, it ranks priority by, you know, how much money that, that the users have, their household incomes. So, she says, quite honestly, it, it puts us in a, a very good position for a very, very low-rate, um, finance plan because of the need of the project versus the, uh, the income of the, of the users. So, she said that I'm, she watching all the state funding and federal funding and stuff like that to, to stay on top of that, to make sure that we, there's not an opportunity that comes up that we could benefit huge from. And that's, that's about it from my conversation with her the other day.
Mike, how often does they think they need to use their truck? Or is it just a remedy and, and accumulated situation?
Basically, a remedy and accumulated situation. Like, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be using that sludge truck every time they pump the tanks. It would be, like right now, the tanks, I think, they did, they were cleaned during the overhaul project. So, that's probably seven, eight years ago. So, we have all that, and then with the fact that it wasn't running up to par and, and a lot of the sludge was going back in, it's, there's more, more sludge, the heavier sludge on the bottom than, than can, uh, than they can, than A1 can pump out with their truck, which in turn makes for a harder digestion process, from what I understand, so. But I think that she'd like to do it this, this time, as according to her letter. And, uh, that's, and then the, it, it would be like as needed, probably the, the Spruce Gum Pump Station because that one is quite deep too. I don't know how deep it is, but I can remember that that line is quite deep going down through there. And, uh, but it would be, it would be one of those things where she would give us a warning that she felt that it was necessary to bring that truck down. But she also said that, that the rate that we're paying for sludge hauling would, they would keep that same rate, which is much cheaper than their like two-hundred-and-fifty bucks an hour for the, for the truck, so. That's.
Okay, thank you.
That's where we're at with that, okay? Anybody else have any questions? What do you have for, older unfinished business?
Um, this is Kristen, and I just have, uh, one thing. So, I was able to connect with Karen and the assessor's office to get those addresses for the, the butters for the taking over ownership of the, I'm losing.
Landfill.
The landfill, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, are we good to send those to those folks, or?
I think I need to, uh, I need to check, one more thing was.
There was something, yeah, there was something that we were kind of waiting on from Buzz. So, just reporting on the fact that.
I think he needed to approve the deed and Deb was gonna get that sent out. I think she already did. She, she sent him a copy of the, of the cover letter that was attached to the deed indicating that.
Okay, I'll reach, I'll, uh, send you an email tomorrow, Mike, to remind us to.
Yeah, thank you.
We are ready to send those letters.
Right, so that, that project, that project's just about wrapped up. We send the letters and then they post it. And there's so many days for people to question and answer, I guess. And that's all kind of now.
Yeah, so the, it has to get sent to the butters and then it also has to be posted in the local papers. And then there's an, an opportunity for people to comment. Um, so that's all that I had for old business.
I forgot all about that, thank you.
I, yeah, I, I was remembering tonight as I was gathering my thoughts before the meeting, so.
Super. Any new business?
Um, one thing from me again, Kristen here. So, I was sent an email from Heather Law from the, the League of Cities and Towns. And they are, they have sent out something called a municipal fiscal survey. And it is basically just to track how municipalities have been impacted by COVID-19. And the purpose of it is to be able to have them advocate for what municipalities need from coming out of this situation. Um, in the email, it said that there was only one sent per town, one of these surveys sent per town. And I was just questioning whether or not I was the best person to fill it out. In my opinion, I thought maybe since Deb has been more, like, kind of present in the office and has been a little bit more aware of how the town, as like a business, if you will, has been impacted by it. I don't, I just, I don't know if I'm the right person to fill it out. And I was wondering if anybody had thoughts on that. I'm happy to do it, I just wanted to check in with all of you before I did.
I, I know that I don't have a handle on everything that's going in and out of that office well enough to feel comfortable doing it. Like you say, Deb or, ever, Deb or Julie would be.
At, yeah, at first I thought, when I first read fiscal, I thought it was more financial, but it seems to be kind of like an overarching, um, idea. So, if it's okay with you guys, I might check in with Deb and see if she feels, you know, between her and I, who might be the best representation?
What do you guys think about that?
This is John, sounds okay with me. I couldn't, uh, download that survey, so I.
Oh, you got it?
I tried to, but I couldn't get it.
Oh, yeah, I would, the only, she, and Deb might have gotten it. The only reason why I just had some concern was because in the body of the email, it said, this is the only one going to this munis, your municipality. So, I just felt like that was, you know, a little bit of a.
I think Deb is the right person that, if she wants to do it.
Yeah, so I'll reach out and see if she wants to. If not, I'm happy to do it, but I just thought I'd bring it to your attention.
Excellent, is anybody opposed to Deb doing that? Nope, I guess not, so that would be great if you could work with Deb on that. Kristen, thank you. Any other new business? No, how about public comment?
Mike, I have something to share, Tom Collard.
Okay, Tom?
I guess it's more of a question than a sharing, is, since this meeting is being recorded, is that open to the public to listen to it a later date?
Um, this is, this is Kristen, um, Tom, yes, so I submit the report, the recordings to PEG TV and they post them in the usual location of which they would normally post should, had we been at the town hall.
Okay, then. I will look on their website then, thank you.
No problem, unfortunately, there, it's just the, um, the audio recording, so, moments might get a little tedious as, as we navigated through it, but they are there, they should be there.
Okay, I'll take a look, thank you, Chair, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
This is Frank.
Hi, Frank.
This is Frank. Uh, I, it's kind of old business, but on the dumpster issue, has anybody kind, all you have to do is call the state troopers up, and they'll generally just run around the Meadowley Valley and, um, show them the dumpster and say, you don't know who owns it, but it's been abandoned here. And they will show you an easy process, I've gone through it. It just takes a little time once you fill out the paperwork for somebody to claim it, uh, the dumpster. And if nobody claims it, then after a certain period of time typically, when I went through it, then it is automatically yours. The only time it becomes a problem is if it's a motorized vehicle and has to be registered as it goes through a process. But there may be an easier process to go through with just the state troopers on that dumpster. And, um, uh, because right now it's floating around, you don't know who owns it, but you're ma, you're managing it as if you do own it, okay? Which can be a, a concern. And I think you should probably own it and tell the League of Cities and Towns of your possession of it and your ownership of it, is if you have to insure it for any reason, reliability. But, uh, uh, the state troopers around it all the time, I see them on the Meadow, on Route Thirty. Um, to, to bring them up and take a look at it. That's what I did, I went to the state trooper Barrett Castle and at the time, and the guy just sold out some paperwork I had to wait like twenty days or something. And, uh, and then I took ownership of it.
All right, thank you for that input, Frank. Anybody else have any public comment?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Have a great evening and we'll see you again in a couple of weeks.
You have to, you, you have to, you do a roll call on the adjournment.
Who would like to second the adjournment?
Good night.
I will, this is Bob, I will.
Bob Jones will. John Malcolm, in favor?
Yes.
Chuck in favor? Chuck, you in favor of adjournment?
Sure, I made the motion.
Bob, you in favor of adjournment?
Yes, Mike.
Okay, unanimous, thank you very much, good evening.
Thank you.